Good evening and welcome to this public forum with the candidates for Mandan City Commission. My name is Ann Green and I am with the League of Women Voters. I will be your moderator for this evening. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and co-sponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are four candidates running for election for two open seats on the Mandan City Commission. We have three of those candidates here this evening. They are Carl Liebitz, Scott Davis, and Mike Braun. The audience here this evening, May 18th, 2016, is invited to submit questions on the index cards provided, or viewers and listeners may phone or text in questions for the candidates. The number to call is (667) 3237. Texts may be sent to the code BMLWV, that's Bismarck Mandan League of Women Voters, and then text the number (22333). Once you do, you'll get a response text and you will be joined to this forum. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of the city of Mandan. Now, let's meet our candidates. You each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Mandan City Commission. Mr. Liebitz, we'll begin with you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ann, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media for this great opportunity. I am Carl Liebitz and I'm excited to be running for a seat on the Mandan City Commission. I think Mandan is really uniquely positioned today to capitalize on generations of growth ahead. A couple of bright spots that I see, number one, look at downtown Mandan. We recently had a great report on the diesel remediation. There's no question Mandan is open for business, and I think businesses are going to head that direction soon. Also, look at the northwest part of Mandan. We have, you know, obviously Walmart, CHI, St. Alexius, the pharmacy. There's a lot of businesses moving into that neighborhood, and I think that's going to be another bright spot in our future. So, I'm excited to the exchange tonight with my fellow candidates and look forward to this opportunity, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Thank you, Ann, and thank you for the invitation tonight. Scott, I'm Scott Davis, and I'm very proud to say a resident here with me and my young family, wife Lorraine and our four children. Very excited to be living here, be part of this very strong vibrant community. I think my asset to serving in, hopefully in this commission capacity, I can bring a lot of very good ideas, strong leadership qualities, decision-making, and pay attention to details for our community, our citizens, and most importantly, our future of the growth of Mandan. So, very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Braun?
Thank you, Ann. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, and Dakota Media Access. My name is Michael Braun, and I'm seeking reelection. I've been a resident of Mandan my whole life. I have pride and loyalty to the city, and I'm very pleased at the direction it's going. I saw the election in 2012 because there were issues that I thought needed to be addressed: property tax, infrastructure, and I want to continue down those paths and work at continuing with the economic development that we have been seeing, which is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to questions. These questions have been developed by the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, our in-house audience, and viewers at home. For our audience this evening, you may submit a question using the index cards that have been provided to our audience members. Viewers may submit questions this evening, May 18th, by calling (667) 3237, or by sending a text to (22333). I believe I misspoke earlier. Send that text to (22333). In the text body, put in, type in "BMLWV". You will then get a response text indicating that you have joined the forum. You can then submit your questions via text. The candidates have not been giving advance copies of the questions here this evening, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Please comply with that time restriction so we can get in as many questions as possible tonight. Our timer will let you know when you're down to 30 seconds, then 10 seconds, and then stop. We will begin with Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, what's your position on the city's tax rebate plan for new restaurants?
Good question, and I think it's a common question across our state, our cities with leadership, and I've always been for a tax incentive of attracting businesses, new businesses, expanding businesses, so forth. My capacity on serving on commerce boards currently gives me first insight of how these tax rebates, tax incentives, work and how they don't work, and how each city applies them and doesn't apply them. And so, I am supportive of that. I think we need to entice and attract new businesses because obviously it creates tax growth for our citizens, for our services, for infrastructure, and hopefully buy-down of taxes, property taxes, for our citizens and for the future, and also for schools as well. So, very, very important that we keep these type of tax incentives moving in the right direction.
Mr. Braun, same question.
Very good. Thank you, Ann. If we didn't have to offer incentives, I would be all for that. If we could bring in businesses and restaurants and the like, that would be wonderful. The simple fact is statistically around the country, that is the way the country is going. You have to incentivize restaurants or any other business to come to your community. They are looking to lower their overhead just like any other company. So, I firmly adhere to that, and in being part of the economic development, working with Allen Huber and the BMDA and the MPO, and that is my portfolio, I have seen directly how that influences and can swing one person who's riding the line to come into Mandan because the bottom line is they look at traffic counts. And if it's traffic counts, we can't compete with Bismarck. But if we offer that incentive, that gives us the little extra cushion or push that would allow them to come to our community. So, I am all for it, and I think we should continue the way we're going. Thank you.
Mr. Liebitz, your position on the city's tax rebate program for new restaurants?
Thank you, Ann. So, I fundamentally, I think, have a little bit of a different approach. I think that, you know, I really believe in the free market and supply and demand, and generally think that entrepreneurs are going to look for opportunities in the community, and if there is a demand, then generally they're going to see that opportunity to make money and move in. And so, that's kind of where I start from fundamentals. If we have incentives, which I agree they're not, sometimes they do have a place, but ideally you would target more primary sector jobs, things that would have a much broader kind of multiplier effect in the economy, bring in more dollars, more jobs, more spending. So, that would be kind of a second priority in incentives. And third, if you go beyond that, I think we really need to look at what type of return are the incentives providing, and I'm looking forward to this restaurant incentive, and I think we need to be accountable to the taxpayers to see if in fact it is effective, and I hope it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Question from a listener, and we will begin with Mr. Braun. What do you feel is the biggest issue Mandan residents are currently facing, and what are your plans to fix it?
Thank you, Ann. Being a resident, the biggest issue that affects me is a continual issue of property tax and the unknown. Without the group effort of the Park Board and the Mandan School District and the city, working to buy down the mills to keep the property tax low, and the state legislators continuing to pass legislation that will buy down the mills for property tax, we're fighting against each other. There has to be a commonality and a working relationship with each of these groups if we're going to move that way. We have an upcoming difficult time in terms of financial and fiscal support that we are receiving and how it's going to affect the budgets, and that's one of the issues that may come about as to whether we take money away from that area, and I'm against that wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Mr. Liebitz, same question.
So, I believe probably the biggest issue facing Mandan is property taxes in a sense, but I really think it's more about generating growth momentum. And, you know, as I mentioned in the top, I do think we are well-positioned. We have a beautiful community, and just need to really focus on a few key things to drive that growth and drive that momentum. And number one, I'd look at fiscal responsibility. And what that means to me is managing spending and working to reduce debt. I mean, Mandan today currently has about $70 million in debt, and so in an annual budget of approximately $30 million, about a third of that, or $9 million, is going to service debt. That's a heavy burden on the taxpayers, and so we need to look for ways to reduce debt of the city long-term, and I think that will over time generate some relief on property taxes and stimulate growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Well, I think it's budgeting. You know, projections is a challenge, I think, right now with the current state of commodity prices. You know, granted, we are predominantly a commodity state, and in some shape or form, these, the economics of our state trickles down to local governments. So, I think the projections of projecting budget features, savings, cost savings, tax incentives, tax cuts, and even possibly cuts, you know, those are things that we really, really need to seriously look at. And looking at our demographics, whether it's housing, the demographics of our aging population, the elderly, the young families that are moving to this city, the also the importance of law enforcement, keeping our communities very, very safe, and attracting talented businesses, talented people through workforce development, and increasing the employment base for each of those employers, the private sector of our community is so vital in keeping the strong employment base here in Mandan, and not crossing rivers and crossing boundaries, keeping them right here is very, very important.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Liebitz. The city needs to address both existing and new infrastructure needs. Several sources of revenue have been cited to fund improvements. What sources of revenue do you suggest tapping?
I would, number one, look at the growth opportunity, and, you know, as we generate additional property tax base and additional sales tax base, it's dollars into the city that we can use to invest in infrastructure. I also think that there's maybe a way to get a better return on our investment with infrastructure. So, if we can, you know, obviously if things are broken, you have to fix them. You know, if a street is crumbling apart, we have to fix it. But if we're going to spend a dollar of the taxpayers' money on infrastructure, and there's an opportunity to invest it in a way that might get a better return on that investment, so, you know, think about like maybe an industrial park or a manufacturing-type development area. If we can look at investing the dollars in that way, then I think we might really launch some momentum, attract additional manufacturing, more primary sector-type jobs, and that will have a much better return for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, same question. What sources of revenue would you suggest using to address new and existing infrastructure needs?
Well, it goes back to the role of government, and I think there is a role for our city government to play, and also there's a private sector role to play, and to marry those two in working together on tax incentives, on infrastructure. You know, I've had the good fortune of working very hard and getting the trust of the systems that we have in our state offered by some of our state agencies: Commerce, CDBG, Housing Finance Agency, all those systems. I know very well of what they can provide and what they cannot provide. I also have very, very close relationship with our congressional, so there's a federal side of this. Maybe there's some federal agencies and federal grants that we could apply for that don't hinder our way of doing business here in our city, but I think it's important to look at all those avenues, and those things I have very, very strong knowledge of, and know exactly how to navigate through those processes in attracting and retaining businesses and growth for our city.
Thank you. Mr. Braun?
Thank you, Ann. Good question. The first thing that we started to do is, we were part of the city that was elected for the hub funds, and we started to apply those hub funds to the infrastructure. Where to get the money from goes closely with economic development. You have to have businesses within your community in order to tax those sales tax dollars and apply those to the infrastructure needs. As I mentioned before, I am not, I am not willing to, nor do I want to unless there's World War III, that I want to start taking property tax and raising those and using those to, for infrastructure needs. I want to stick with the sales tax dollars, the hub fund if it's available, and go that route. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Where does the Mandan, I apologize, we're going to begin with Mr. Davis. Where does the Mandan Growth Fund fit into the funding picture?
Well, it's another good question. I think there's always mechanisms and places for various growth funds, keeping those sustainable, I think, is key. And again, it goes back to the fundamental practice of your employment base, keeping people at work, keeping them applying for jobs, workforce development, whether they're graduating out of high school or graduate from college. We need to attract those, our hometown people back to our city. I think that's a, that's a very, very key in making this sustainable, in the growth fund, sustainable. Again, going back to property tax relief, services, safety, quality of life, and providing services and access to a lot of things that we have. Also, I think that is important is tourism, the strong events that we have in our city, aside from Fourth of July, the races, the rodeos, you know, keeping those things going through the winter months as well is exactly what I'd like to be a part of. So, yeah, there's a lot of partnerships that I think we can do in sustaining that growth fund.
Thank you. Mr. Braun, how does the Mandan Growth Fund fit into the funding picture?
I think, I think it's an absolute need that we have in the community. It was, it was set up about a decade ago, and it was designed to bring in and promote economic development within the city because we had a distinct disadvantage with Bismarck, and up to then, we were having trouble bringing in business. So, we offered these incentives with the Growth Fund, and then we have storefront improvement. In addition, they added the Renaissance Zone. Statistically, the Growth Fund has brought in and helped promote many of the businesses that are thriving now and are in our community. Being the economic development portfolio and working with Ms. Huber and the BMDA, I really enjoy the position I'm in right now, and I would like to continue with that portfolio, if I may, and to continue to bring in business. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Liebitz?
Yeah, so I think the Mandan Growth Fund has definitely generated some success. You know, and what I'd like to do on really all the incentive programs, Renaissance Zone or, you know, whatever it is, just kind of take a step back and look at what type of return are we generating for the taxpayers. And for every dollar that gets invested or revenue that gets deferred as a result of an incentive, I think we should be accountable to the taxpayers to try and show them the, you know, true return on their investment and true results. And so, I think that's what I would do with, with Mandan Growth Fund. It certainly, if it's been successful, then it has a key role in our community and it should continue. But again, I'd just take a step back and look at all of them and try and really strategically think about it, you know, what makes the most sense going forward.
Thank you. Next question, we'll begin with Mr. Braun. This question comes in via text. Did you or do you support the Mandan Sports Complex, and please explain why or why not?
I did. I think it's, it's a needed, it's needed for our community. I was involved in athletics my whole life. There's so many things that you can learn from athletics: self-discipline, teamwork, compromise, helping each other, personal strength. Those are all wonderful things that build character, and this sports facility promotes that. You can, you can get those things elsewhere, but athletics puts them all together and brings them forward. The Ferris Field is a part of Mandan, and it's hard to say we're going to let that go, but if you saw the new complex and how it, it's bright and it promotes the city, and it's in a wonderful location, and people come by and they see, this is representative of what Mandan is. Mandan is a community, and it's a place where you can raise your children and enjoy life there. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Liebitz, same question.
So, I support it for probably two reasons. One is, I think, the, you know, it fills a need in the community, and, you know, Ferris Field was wore down, there's a shortage of ice time for hockey players, and as you look around the state, I mean, hockey is a thriving sport, and so I think it fills a need, no questions asked. But probably more importantly, I look at it is the voters of Mandan approved that project, and they approved the tax increase to pay for that project. And I really think in an elected position, we have to really work hard to listen to the voters and listen to the, really the community and the voice. And so, for both of those reasons, I support it.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I voted yes for it, and my family voted for it, and because of the young family, I think if you keep in mind the median age of our city is around 38, 39, if you look at some of the data out there. And so, to me, I think it's really, for me personally, it's ownership. You know, it gives me some ownership in my community. I volunteer for a lot of parks and rec. I'm currently a coach, a volunteer for our Bismarck, excuse me, Mandan Backboard Club, and I'm proud to say I'm the vice president of that now. So, we do a lot of tournaments, so we have a nice venue now that we can do tournaments, we can do hockey. But the other thing I think to keep in mind too is the winter months, aside from the sporting events, how can we keep other events attracted coming to our city, whether it's concerts, roping events, rodeos, other events, but have this place booked every weekend or every other day if possible. So, I think that's very, very important in keeping that place open for business, keep it busy. And again, I think it will create more jobs for people to work at some of those events as well. So, I'm a big supporter of that event center.
Thank you. Next question, we'll begin with Mr. Liebitz. The city of Mandan has spent years trying to attract and retain retail business. How would you propose the city attract and maintain retail business?
So, I really would focus on a couple of things. You know, one, as I started, we talked about fiscal responsibility and just trying to really manage spending and work to lower debt, and I think, you know, I talked to one business owner in downtown Mandan retail that expressed an interest in trying to expand her business, and she wanted to grow, wanted to look for maybe a larger space, but was concerned about the tax load that that would bring onto her business. So, I think if we can be prudent in our spending and managing the checkbook, managing the balance sheet of the city really, I think that will help make it more profitable for businesses. You know, I also would, again, kind of circling back to the incentives, I'd like to go through all the programs that we have out there and really try and drill into what's worked, what hasn't worked, and you know, we have a very professional team at the city, and work with them to come up with a strategy going forward to see what really is going to get the best return on the investment for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Well, for me and my background, I have a strong background in marketing, branding. We're Mandan, and I think we need to create our own identity. We're not other cities, we're not neighboring cities, we're Mandan. And I think that's important that we, we tell the world that who we are and what we do, how exciting it is in attracting, recruiting, retaining businesses, young talent, and taking care of our elderly, I think, is also key to this too. But I think the marketing brand, whether it's tourism, like I said before, the events that we have, I think obviously we keep those growing, we keep those strong. But I think as a commissioner, if voted in, I would be a huge cheerleader, a huge recruiter in talking to businesses, talking to people of coming, "Come to here and live" because it's a great place to live, it's a great place to live, to retire, it's a great place to raise a family, and it's very, very safe. So, that's what I would do as commissioner.
Thank you. And Mr. Braun?
Ann, could you repeat the question?
Sure. The city of Mandan has spent years trying to attract and retain retail business. How would you propose that the city attract and maintain retail businesses?
We continue with what we're doing. We have Allen Huber, which is Economic Development Personnel, which was brought in. The reason why she was brought in was because we were having trouble bringing in and maintaining businesses, and it goes back to a simple, a simple answer, and that is called traffic counts. If you look at Bismarck, they have more per square capita than we do, and the businesses look at coming in and having the least amount of overhead, and so they look at a place that has the traffic counts. So, what do we do to combat that? We promote, we promote the city, and we look at economic development and how incentives can bring them in. And so, I would continue with what we're doing and perhaps even more aggressively. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to remind our audience members here in, here in the building that they may submit their questions using the index cards that have been provided. Alternatively, any viewers who are listening today on the 18th of May may call (667) 3237, or text (22333), that number again, (22333). And in the message area of your text box, type in the letters BMLWV. You'll then be given a prompt, joining us to the forum, and you may submit your questions. All right. Next question, we'll begin with Mr. Davis. What strategies should the city implement to address affordable housing concerns?
Good question. And I go back to demographics. You know, what is our demographics? What is the acreage needed to develop new housing, to rehab new housing? What is the need for retirement people? What is the numbers for new families moving here? So, I really look at the demographics of housing development, and I think a big, big part of this is obviously infrastructure. How are we going to pay for infrastructure, roads, sewer, lift stations, and so forth, and who's going to burden those type of, who's going to pay for it? Again, I go back to tax base, you know, businesses, jobs, tax returns, et cetera, incentives, working with our state partners, our legislative body, who I have a great relationship and I know that legislative process very well, and also possibly work with our federal partners too about what's out there to develop and retain new development for our city, the future, and all demographics. But you really look at, you know, the apartments, you know, the one-bedroom, the two-bedroom, and so forth. So, I really need to focus on that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Braun, same question. What strategies should the city implement to address affordable housing concerns?
With the wonderful oil industry that we had, it created inflated costs, which inflated the housing, and it sustained that for a good time. Now, with the oil industry going down, we still hold those costs to some degree at a higher level. We, as a commissioner, as a city, should promote, emphasize, and request that the developers that are coming in make a portion of what they're building as low-cost housing, if you will. That is one of the things I would do. I, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braun. And Mr. Liebitz, same question.
So, you know, I certainly currently sit on the Planet and Zoning Commission, and I see developers have come in on a fairly regular basis trying to fit this need in our community. And so, I think that's evidence to one extent that if there's a demand and there's an opportunity to make money from a developer, they're going to do that. But I think we, as a city, need to work with them to make that happen. And, you know, right now, we're in the process of looking at maybe some smaller lot-type options, ways to develop in a little bit more of a compact or efficient manner. And, you know, if you could put in a zoning that would support that in a new development, that might be one way to really generate some more affordable housing in a way that, you know, developers are going to be able to take advantage of and the communities and residents are going to like. I also think we need to be thoughtful in how we invest in infrastructure, and if you're going to, and I mentioned this on the top, if you're going to put a dollar here or a dollar there, and there's a way, you know, if part of that investment can support future growth or future development, maybe more efficiently, then, then as an alternative, then we should think about that so that the infrastructure really supports that development and that affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Braun, we'll begin with you. Do you support the two-year tax exemption for new construction, that exemption being up to $75,000 that the city of Mandan currently provides?
That's coming before the commission, and up to this point, I have, when you look at the amount of $75 and how it contributes to the total amount of what the housing costs now, it seems like almost frivolous amount. It doesn't offer an extension. now, it seems like almost frivolous amount. It doesn't offer an extensive relief, if you will. So at this point, I don't know if, I think people are going to move to Mandan because of the community, not because we offer a $75,000 rebate on a new home. So at this point, I'm not for continuing with that program.
Thank you. Mr. Leepitz, same question.
Yeah, so I'll say, you know, when I, my wife and I purchased our home in Mandan, it was a new construction, and we were, you know, part of that program and able to take advantage of that. And as a, as a home buyer at that time, I certainly enjoyed it. But I agree with Mr. Braun, I think we should step back and really think about, is this working? Is that, you know, what's the real dollar impact to our residents? And is that the best way for the city to, in a sense, invest those dollars? You know, if it truly is deemed to be effective in attracting people to move into Mandan, you know, I'd be open to discussing it. But, you know, that, that, those dollars have to be accountable to the taxpayers. And we need to figure out if it's an effective tool or not. And if it's not, it should not be continued.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, you, I think it really need to analyze, you know, the incentive process here. I look at construction costs, you know, obviously, construction costs have gone up, the price of lumber, sheet metal and so forth have gone up. And that has burdened, obviously, the developers who do good work here in our city. And, you know, and a lot of permits that have, we've seen growth in our city in the last five years, I'll say. But I think some of these programs really need to be revisited because of the incentives and obviously who's paying for it. Is it our citizens that are paying for this, or is it coming out of some other fund that's generating through the city? But again, I think that the cost of these incentives need to be reviewed and analyzed before we can make a concrete decision on some of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Leepitz, we'll begin with you. Here's a question that came in via text. How do you support childcare as a community infrastructure to build a business and support workforce?
Well, there's no question. Childcare is essential. Families that have young children, they need it so they can go to work. And there's certainly been a shortage historically in that. And, you know, if there's a demand for it, you know, if we can do an effective job of promoting that need, perhaps, trying to attract more people in, then maybe that would, kind of through the private development, if you will, that would theoretically fit that need. But, I mean, absolutely, if you don't have a safe, reliable place to leave your children, people are going to think twice about whether or not they want to put their children in childcare or daycare. And so, you know, it's essential. You need to have quality resources and that, you know, is part of a community need that we need to fill.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, this one's a little personal because I have a young family. So I've been through the childcare process quite a bit and still currently pay for childcare, which is a great thing, by the way. It's a part of our economy. It's a strong part of our economy. We need childcare in our city for mom and dad to go to work or for maybe dad to stay home or mother to stay home, depending on your situation. But I think a part of this, in my experience, has been whether it's a private childcare service, whether it's in-home, out-of-home, I've been part of that. I've utilized those services, just making sure that they're safe, making sure that they're certified and up to licensing requirements by our city and maybe by our state, too. Those are important questions to ask, but they are a vital part of our community and the growth. And I think it's also an attractive part of our city, too, that we have quality childcare services. And I think we take that a step further with preschool, kindergarten, and to our school systems. I think that's so important, too, in keeping the future of our, my family, my little ones into the school system. So it's a good thing.
Thank you. Mr. Braun, same question.
Thank you, Ann. Definitely childcare is important. In this day and age, when both parents have to work to provide for the family, the parents look for someone that is competent. They look for guidelines. They look for policies in which they're held accountable. And that is something that I feel personally, that you have to ensure that those things are being met. You hear horror stories about some of the childcare that are not doing what they're supposed to, and there's neglect, and there's things going on like that. And I think as a city, we have some push in how we can direct and promote and push and make sure that the childcare facilities, not so much the private, but more of the larger scale, are doing what they're supposed to as part of the community. Because I think when we, when we instill that and push that, it tells what we're, what we're all about as a community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, we'll begin with you. What strategies should be implemented to enhance fire services in Mandan, particularly on the north side?
Well, there again, it goes back to our tax base. What can we afford? What can we build? Obviously, fire is crucial part of our, the safety of our well-being for all people in response. You know, whether we're FTEs, full-time employees of the city for the department, has to be looked at. How can we afford that? But also keep in mind the growth, which we're doing very well as far as the growth goes. So those needs of the basic services is the role, in my opinion, of the city commissioner, to look at those and to somehow find a way to build those basic services for the safety and well-being of our citizens and protection and safety of our people. So those strategies need to be talked about, talked about with the current fire system, and maybe there's a partnership with our county as well. But a lot of things that need to be discussed on the table.
Thank you. Mr. Braun?
Mr. Nodello is a wonderful leader in the fire department, and he's very well-read. He knows the policies, he knows the procedures, he knows the requirements as to what is needed. But he has a personal approach, and that is, he has a truly genuine care for the citizens of Mandan. And so at this particular point, we have been talking about another fire station because by policy, you should only be between three and five minutes away from a call. And right now, being south or here in the main area and trying to get way up by Old Red Trail, you're going to have a difficult time meeting that. And so I'm a firm supporter of the fire department and how he runs his organization. I think that we have to do what we can to maintain the staff that he has. Right now, no one wants to leave. It's just a wonderful place to be, and I think we need to continue to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Leepitz?
Yeah, there's no question. The fire department does a great job and fills a valuable role in our community. You know, my wife thought our house was on fire last year. It turned out not to be, but she, we were really impressed with the professionalism of the crew that showed up. So, I mean, they just do a great job. Regarding the north side of town, my understanding is that we currently have some hub city funding flagged to build that north fire hall, and I would definitely support that. You know, it may take some time to fully staff it and, you know, have an actual engine there and a team. But, you know, to me, if we're able to hang on to those dollars and spend it in that way, I think that'd be a good investment and would make a lot of sense to help really bring that first-class service to the north side of town as well.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for your presence here this evening and for your thoughtful responses. We're now going to move on to closing arguments, or excuse me, to closing statements.
Easy.
We're not arguing here this evening. To your closing statements, you will each have one minute, and we will begin with Mr. Braun.
Oh, how nice. Thank you, Ann. I'm Michael Braun, and as I mentioned, I'm seeking reelection. I've lived here my whole life. I love the city of Mandan. I can't think of any place I'd rather be. When I first ran in 2012, property tax was at the top, and I think it will continue to be at the top for as long as you're resident. Economic development as part of Mandan because of the situation we're in with Bismarck is incredibly important. But as I've been here, I also see infrastructure needs that really need to be addressed. We have some roads that are in disrepair and need to be worked on. And I would love to work with the engineer or work on a plan in which I can see how the plan looks out 10, 15 years at the different roads that need to be worked and how we can support that or move that process along. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leepitz?
Thank you again for this opportunity and to my fellow candidates for great exchange of ideas. You know, Mandan's a beautiful community, and I think we're really well-positioned for the future, not just for next week, but for generations to come. And if we can really focus on being fiscally responsible and making smart decisions in how we invest in our community, our infrastructure, supporting our law enforcement, our fire departments, really provide that first-class services to the community, I think we're going to enjoy generations of prosperity and growth going forward. And the other thing I'll leave you with is, you know, we all have ideas up here that we share, but I think it's important that everybody in the audience, everybody at home, you know, really step back and think about it and think about ideas that they have to help move Mandan forward and take advantage of some of the opportunities that we have. And so if it's next week, next year, two years, you have a great idea, please approach your leadership, the city leadership, and, you know, share that idea because everybody's voice and everybody's perspective is really valuable and needs to be heard. So thank you again. I appreciate your consideration and your vote on June 14th. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Davis?
Yeah, it's my credentials, my work ethic, my background, working for our former governor, working for our current governor at a cabinet level. I'm in these conversations every day, every week, whether it's infrastructure, commerce, taxation, roads, higher ed, education. I'm in these discussions every day. We're constantly planning, we're constantly budgeting, we're constantly evaluating how we run government effectively. So I'm in it every day. And I like to bring these same values, the same work ethic, the same assets that I have currently to our great city here in Mandan, and most importantly, to the citizens and the future of Mandan. So I'd really appreciate your vote this coming June. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would like to also thank the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and the volunteers here from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Thank you to the viewers at home and the audience members here this evening for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and the issues. This program will replay several times on Government Access Cable, Channel 2, and 602 HD, and will be available for online viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading up to the June 14th election. We will now close this candidate forum. We remind you that you will need a form of identification to vote. In North Dakota, you can find identification requirements and additional voting information on the websites or at the office of your county auditor or the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you and good night.